Nice. The criminal ordinance is or twas a criminal or not. So I want to make the conclusion that towing license.
Let's just do the open public meeting statement and take a roll call. Councilman Akafreda called me and indicated that he's on Route 4, so he'll be here shortly. We can begin at 7 o'clock. Work session meeting of the River Edge Mayor and Council for Monday, December 16th, at 10:00 PM. Out of the notice of this meeting has been provided by sending notices on December 21st, 2012, to the record in the Ridgewood News, positioning notice of this meeting on the bulletin board in the lobby of the Borough Hall, and filing a notice of this meeting with the municipal clerk. Like to remind everyone in attendance that we have three exits in the council chambers, two to the front and one to the rear. We're on the record, both by video and audio. If any member of the public wishes to speak, they'd only give us their name and address. They can make any statement or ask a question regarding any business that affects their interests. We have a public hearing tonight on Demoro Towing that we can begin. I think it's the first order of business. It's going to be cheaper, so we have Jake up here. Jake Kobe. The first order of business, our board administrator writes, is to make a motion to go into closed session to discuss a matter of personnel. We're going to have a motion to go into closed session.
Second.
We have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Let's get anybody that is not a work session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Are we clicking that?
Judy, could you just make a note? I don't know if we had a formal roll call for the executive session, but everybody was present. If we get a roll call for the work session, I don't remember if I did one.
Here.
Passant.
Here.
Here.
I'm here.
He's present. We have Councilwoman-elect, Fustine. Okay. We have the Demoro Towing hearing, an appeal of denial of their application to be put on the borough's tow list. I am going to turn the hearing over to our borough attorney, Mr. Farlow.
Mayor and council, I sent you an email just to try and expedite explaining the procedure. Demoro Towing filed for an application to be on the approved rotating list to tow on behalf of the borough. The police department rejected that application. Your ordinance provides for an appeal process, and that appeal process is the mayor and council. You can waive the police department's disqualification upon a showing of good cause. So this is basically the appeal process. We'll try and go through it as quick as possible. Basically, the element-
Why don't we call Mr. Demoro up to the table? Mr. Demoro, you going to have any witnesses or anything? Yeah, you going to bring him? Yeah, come on up. Just let them get seated.
That's fine.
No, no, just finish making your oath. Why don't you get a chair? There you go.
What the borough is, what the mayor and council is basically going to be relying upon or determining is whether the facts and circumstances that the police department considered in denying them was an offense involving moral turpitude. That should disqualify them for being on the towing list. So what you're going to hear is, you're going to weigh as to whether it's an offense of moral turpitude. They were not convicted of any crime resulting out of this. They were issued a summons for a borough ordinance. They pled guilty to the borough ordinance of prohibited acts. That is not a crime, though. So it's basically an offense involving moral turpitude, and that's what the police department denied them on. So we can either, on your preference, we can either hear from the police department first, or we can hear from Demoro Towing. You can go from there.
Let's hear from-
With all due respect, I think we're waiting for Lieutenant Walker. I don't know if he's in the audience. If not, then we should start with the tow.
Yeah, with Demoro Towing. No, no, no. Okay. We're going to-
Okay, we towed a car that was in her parking spot that-
His parking spot.
Okay.
You are who?
My name's Teresa Rodriguez. I live at River Edge Commons. I came home at like, I guess it was around 12:30 at night. It was kind of snowy and messy as it was now, around the time of year, last year, actually. And there was someone in my spot. I called the so-called super. The so-called super, and he didn't answer his cellphone. I know that the rental office is closed, so I didn't bother. So at a quarter to 1:00 in the morning, I have a spot that's assigned to me. I pay the rent on it. And I couldn't get into my spot. There was a car there. So I called the towing department.
Why didn't you call the police?
I don't know. I just called the tow company. I didn't think to call the police. Somebody was parked in my spot. It's private property. Have it, you know, towed out. I mean-
Are you related to anyone at Demoro Towing?
I'm related to both of them.
And what's the relationship?
Mary's my sister, and Gary's my brother-in-law.
All right. So you called Demoro Towing?
And I said, "There's someone in my spot." And she says, "Okay, we just have to call the police and let them know, and then we'll be over, you know, see what happens." I thought, "Okay, fine." So I waited, and I came and towed the car out. I took my spot, and I was there.
When did you, what time was it when you called Demoro Towing? Approximately?
Approximately 12:30 AM.
Okay. And what time did the tow truck actually come?
Shortly thereafter, half hour.
All right. Anything else?
No. I have some paperwork from the landlord that states that I have a spot that I paid for, and so with that-
I have that. I submitted that. We acknowledge it. This spot's rented here.
Is it a particular spot? Does it have a number or anything on it?
Yeah, 27.
Number 27. How long have you had that spot?
I've been there for three years.
Okay. Any questions for this witness? Kathleen?
Maybe the attorney. Has the person that's car was towed, were they notified that you were coming tonight?
Police is going to get into that. No, I don't want to answer that. I'd rather you hear from them as to how the facts and how they became aware of that and so forth. It's a good question, but we reserve on that.
Is Demoro's contact information posted publicly outside for other people of this complex that they would know who to call?
No, they would have to, I guess, call the landlord or call the super.
Thank you.
All right. Have anybody else want to call as a witness?
Well, the super was supposed to come, but he didn't show up. But Mary can explain the seizure while we went through.
Okay.
Is that all right?
Yeah.
Just give us your name, please.
I'm Mary Demoro. In the past, I understand that this ordinance, I don't know how long it's been on the record or how long it's on your books, I should say, but in the past, we've towed cars out of River Edge private property impounds, and I brought a couple of samples. And the procedure is that the people call if someone's in their parking space, and we go, we tow it, and we notify the police department. If you've listened to the CD that I provided you with, there's hesitation in the phone call, both with me and the dispatcher, because of his unclarity, thinking that it was a repossession in which it wasn't. I called him, but in a couple of minutes, whether he called me before or after, I don't remember. It was a year ago. Because there was a private property, and then there was a police, actual police impound. So there were two calls going on at the same time, and I don't remember the conversation because, like I said, I do a lot of calls. But these are five impounds that I've done this year out of River Edge. And the procedure was, the people call, they're parked in someone's spot, we remove the car, we call the police, we give them the license plate and the information. One of the police officers, it was the same scenario, one of the impounds, it was a police officer. He worked all night on a snowy night, he got home to his apartment. Someone was in his parking spot, so he parked by the garbage cans. Garbage guy came in the morning, couldn't get the garbage. His car was impounded. He came in, he said, "Oh, yeah, I got home late," whatever, explained to me, showed me his badge, and I was like, "Don't worry about it, no charge." And, I mean, that is our procedure. As far as the ordinance, if I'm ignorant to the ordinance, I never ever knew the ordinance existed. And if it does exist, the five times prior to Ms. Rodriguez's car, my sister being towed, the police officer should have said to me or the dispatcher, whatever he was, "Oh, you need to call the police on that first." And that's what we do now. Whenever I get a call for River Edge, I tell them, "Call the police." I don't even go anymore. I just tell them, "Call the police." And then, once the police get there, ticket it, call me.
Demoro, you were issued a summons for violating a prohibited act. Is that correct?
Yes.
And you paid that summons?
Yes.
And part of that was that the person's vehicle, or automobile that was towed, restitution had to be made to them?
Yes.
Okay. So as part of the guilty plea, you had to pay back the towing charges to the automobile owner. Is that correct?
Plus court support fee.
Okay. With River Edge Commons, is that the name of the apartment complex?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have a contract with River Edge Commons to tow vehicles out of there?
There's no, we don't have contracts with any private property impound. There's no contract.
The Predatory Towing Prevention Act specifically says that you have to have a contract with the property owner.
They call us. There's no written contract for any of it.
Okay. But they didn't call you in this situation?
No, the property owner of the property-
The property owner did not call you?
She called me.
I understand. She's not the property owner, though. She's a tenant.
She owns the parking spot.
Oh, she leases the parking spot. She rents the parking spot.
Okay.
Property owner is River Edge Commons. They didn't call you on this, correct?
No.
Okay. And you don't have a contract with that?
No.
In fact, all of those five that you indicated, who called you on all of those five? Was it the property owner or was the tenant?
It was the property owner.
Okay. But you don't have contracts with them either, though, you indicated.
No.
Okay. But you're aware of the Predatory Towing Prevention Act that requires that you have a contract with the property owner, and that the sign, there should have to be a sign that's conspicuous when you enter, that vehicles shall be towed, the penalty, and that who is the towing company. You're aware of that?
That, yes, I'm aware of. But there's no actual contract that's signed.
You don't have a contract to sign?
Not with anyone.
Okay. But I'm just saying, but it requires, the Predatory Towing Prevention Act requires that a towing, that a contract be entered into. It could be verbal, it could be written. It doesn't say that it's verbal or written.
Oh, okay. So there are verbal contracts that I have, but not written contracts.
Do you have one with this River Commons?
Yes, I do. Yes, I do.
You have a verbal contract that they'll call you to come remove cars?
Yes. Actually, they're paving their parking lot. This is the sign that they have, that you have a copy of this.
But there's no sign on River Edge Commons that indicates that you are the towing, the approved towing of that complex, though. Is that correct?
No. There is, actually, there was one, but someone took it down.
That says that you are the approved-
Yeah, Demoro Towing on there, yes. But they took it down because they're paving their lot.
Okay. Was that, when did they take that down? Was that up-
I don't know the date that it went down.
Was it up when this offense occurred? It was up?
Yes, there's signs up.
There was a sign up that says that you were the towing for River Edge Commons?
Yes, it has our name and our address and our phone number.
And that when this event, offense occurred?
Yes, there was a sign up there, but when we went there, after this had happened, and after I went and spoke to the landlord, the superintendent, he said to me, "We took the sign down because we're paving the lot."
Is it common for renters to call you to remove, or is it more common that a super would call you and say that, "Hey, look, come remove a vehicle"?
It's both. In different apartment complexes, like say, New Milford, one of the apartments over there, the tenants are allowed to call. On other properties, property maintenance, property managers will call us. So it's both.
And in your experience with this complex, who usually calls you? Is it usually the tenant?
No, I don't even remember who would call me. Usually, it's property owner or tenant.
Let anyone else answer the question.
On the evening where you came to tow your sister's vehicle, did you make any effort to call the landowner, the property owner, before coming onto the premises?
Me personally, no.
Did anyone else in Demoro Towing, if you're aware of, make any effort to contact the property owner?
No, she tried to call the super, and he didn't answer.
Okay, but you yourself didn't make any effort?
I myself didn't. Usually, we have, like, whoever impounds the car, we have them sign the ticket.
And who signed?
Teresa signed.
But in the other examples that you showed, it was the property owner?
No, well, they're property owners, they're tenants. You know, whoever called the impound in. I don't just go places and take people's cars.
And then, when the municipal court judge asked you, "Why are you pleading guilty to a prohibited act?", what was your basis? What was your factual basis that you provided there? The improperly removed an automobile from the spot?
Because it was just financially.
Well, I don't think the judge would have taken that as a factual basis for your guilty plea.
Well, I pled guilty because financially, it was, just plead guilty because I didn't want to pay a lawyer.
I understand, but did the judge ask you, "Why are you pleading guilty"? What's the basis of your guilty plea? Or did he just accept that you're pleading?
No, I don't remember. I did just plead guilty, though.
I understand, but most municipal court judges-
Well, he told me I can go to jail for five years.
I understand. But most municipal, before you enter a guilty plea, they want you to explain to them why you were pleading guilty, and provide them with a factual basis where they can accept your guilty plea. So I was just trying to get to what you explained to the judges, to why you're pleading guilty to a prohibited act.
I think he read something out of the book where it said, "I go to jail for five years if I'm found guilty, so I'd like you on guilty." Or just pay.
So did you follow proper procedure, or did you just cut out some steps because it was your sister?
No, I followed the procedures that I would do for anyone.
So the normal procedure would be to alert the police?
Yes.
And you didn't do that?
No, I did do that.
After you did.
I told the police and told them that I had a private property impound.
So you had the police there on scene?
No, they, that, I didn't know about that ordinance where the police had to come first.
How long have you been in business?
Thirty-five years. And like I said, five of the toes last year. I did it the same way that I did this one, where we just go, tow the car, and call the police department and tell them we have it. I didn't know about the ordinance where the police have to be on scene.
So is our ordinance where the police is on scene?
No, there's no ordinance that says the police have to be on scene. There's none that indicates that.
But is that proper procedure to call the police?
The chief will get into the procedures to what the tow is, and it's just, he'll explain what the procedure is, what they require from them.
Quick question. I don't know whether it's, if it's a matter of ordinance or a matter of protocol or whatever, but you're saying that I could have been a tenant in this complex, and I can call you and say, "There's somebody in my space," and you would come and remove a car with no proof or, you're just taking my word out it that there's somebody in my space?
No, I take your information, I make you sign the ticket, and I call it into the police department.
But the councilman has a good point. I mean, you knew this was your sister, you knew she owned the spot.
But I do it for everybody the same way.
That's not saying it's the right way. If the councilman called you and says, "Hey, there's somebody in my spot, I'm the owner of 27," you're saying you're going to just come down there, "That's not my vehicle." You'll call the police and say, "We're doing a private tow," and just haul the vehicle out of there without any proof that he is the renter?
That is the way, yes, that is the way we do our private property impounds. That is our standard procedure. Not in River Edge anymore, though.
What time did you call the police to let them know that you had the vehicle?
Right after she called me. I don't know the exact time. It's on the tape, though. It's on documents, the time. It's on the police blotter.
We have the tape. We'll let you listen to the tape.
It's on the police blotter also, the time. There's actually two recordings, so I only received one.
All right.
You have that.
I have just one more question. Have you ever been legally, had a legal problem like this before with your towing?
No.
None at all, ever?
Never, not in 35 years, never.
How many municipal lists are you currently on?
Eight.
Have you ever been disqualified from a municipal list?
Never.
Okay. All right, anything else?
Think I do a pretty good job for River Edge.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's hear from our police. Want to call Lieutenant Walker?
Yeah, I believe, no, we're going to start with Chief Creedy. Who do you want to start with? The patrol officer?
Officer Shaw.
Sir, your name?
Officer Michael Shaw, River Edge Police Department, badge number 42.
You were working that day?
Yes, I was.
That evening? Explain to us, you were on the desk?
That's correct.
Okay, explain to us what happened.
The first initial call was a disabled vehicle, at which time Officer Griffith requested a AAA tow, which Demoro is the primary AAA tow, that we were advised to call for any AAA tow requests. When I contacted Demoro, I spoke with, later identified as Mrs. Demoro, and I asked for the disabled, you know, tow for disabled. As we were in our conversation, it was a, "Oh, by the way, we removed the car from 199."
Let me back up, sir. Where was the disabled vehicle located?
Initial call was Hackensack Avenue.
Okay, so you received that call, and then your procedure was to call the Demoro Towing to go get a tow truck to remove it?
Correct. It was Hackensack and Main Street.
And your testimony now is that while you initiated the call to Demoro Towing, at that point, it was, they explained to you what was going on at River Edge Commons?
Yes.
Okay. So she may initiate the phone call to the police department?
No, no. We initiated the call for the disabled.
So you dispute what she just did?
That is correct.
Okay. So go ahead, sir.
So as we were speaking, as per my report, choose number, excuse me, give me a second.
So and what does she indicate to you, sir, while you're looking? The, "Oh, by the way" statement?
While we were speaking about the disabled, during our conversation, she said she impounded a vehicle at 199 Kindercombe Road. So at that time, I asked her, you know, when she was giving me the information, I said, "Are you getting the vehicle?" She said, "No, we already have it." So she already towed the vehicle. So if we didn't call for the impound, we never would probably have known that she even, that she took the vehicle in the first place.
Is it common practice that a tow company would call the police department and indicate that they have a private tow?
On a repossession, which is what I, when we were speaking, that's what I kind of took it as, they always contact us and say, "Hey, we're going to be over here. We'll repo on this car. If we get it, we'll come in with the paperwork."
Well, it means it's not a repossession, it's an unauthorized vehicle in a private car.
Correct, which is what we found out later.
They'll call you and say, before they tow it?
Yes.
Do you send, do you send an officer there? Or usually not?
I've been a police officer for 17 years, and for any cars that are removed from private property, we're always called. We always send a police officer. And whether it's the property owner or the property manager, sign the complaint, and the vehicle gets removed.
In your 17 years, and I assume you've been on a lot of these then calls, have you ever been on any calls with Demoro Towing?
No.
Okay. Anything else in your report?
So during our conversation, when she already told me that she had the vehicle in her possession already, she gave me the license plate. So at that time, I requested the paperwork from her, which she said, "Well, her driver has the paperwork, and once he's clear, because they're very busy, they would drop the paperwork off." Well, I finished work at 6:30 in the morning, and no paperwork was ever dropped off. So we never heard anything back from them from the rest of the night.
So you had no information on this vehicle at that point?
I had the license plate. That's all I had. But like any other repo, when they come in, they'll bring the whole sheet from the bank that shows who's the owner of the vehicle.
Why did you think it was a repo instead of just a private tow?
Because the way she, the way she spoke to me on the phone, she said that it was an impound. So I don't know whether I misunderstood her from our conversation. I took it as if it was a repossession from the property. Because normally, when we have a call like this, someone will call and complain with a tenant, say, "There's a person, I lease space 25, and someone's parked in my parking space. Can you send an officer down to come, could come and help us out?" So we'll send a police officer down, we'll find out who the owner of the vehicle is, we'll try to notify the owner, and if not, then we, you know, take the proper procedures and remove the vehicle.
We have the call on tape. The mayor and council wants to hear that between the officer and Mr. Demoro, the initial.
Let's play it.
I think you should at this point, because it's too conflicting versions.
All right. Who has it? Judy, do you have a disc from Denise? I don't have it. No? I thought you were all queued up. There's some other, other- I didn't keep the disc. I thought Denise had it. Any questions?
Do you have what time you made that phone call to Demoro?
Yes. When we first reported, the time was one minute after midnight.
Officer, did you, you eventually issued a summons?
No, that was Officer Casey.
Okay. You didn't issue the summons, okay.
I did not.
Besides the initial intake and anything, did you have any other interaction with this situation?
I did not.
Okay. Tom.
Tom, can I just ask for a clarification on something? Catherine Minion, just ask what time you made the call to Demoro, and you said midnight?
Well, the disabled vehicle was called, and at one minute after midnight, the request for Demoro was at 00:48 hours. So it was like 10 to 1:00.
I provided everyone with the officer's report.
Yes, the report number is PD 131938. That is the initial report for the disabled.
Questions? Can you hear the tape? What would be the procedure for a tenant who had an assigned spot, and there was an unauthorized vehicle parked in the spot, and the, you know, the property, you couldn't contact the property manager?
We have a pretty good relationship. We have cell phone numbers for all the superintendents, you know, for all the properties. So, you know, I would say that at times, we're able to get someone to come down.
What if you couldn't?
Well, then they would be up to the resident.
To do what?
To sign a complaint.
Okay.
That's why we issue both summons.
But you would? In this case, there was no summons issued by the, by the tenant, Rodriguez, right?
No. There was no motor vehicle summons issued at all.
But there would be an attempt to try to contact the owner of the car?
Correct.
Before you would have towed?
Officer, can I ask you, are there ever incidents where there's not a tow, but maybe a sticker?
Hi, I'm here from DeMoro.
How are you?
Good, I have a private property impound, so I have to give you the plate number for a car.
Okay, you guys are taking it right now?
Yeah.
You have the paperwork, or you can drop off here?
Um, the paperwork?
Yes, like a sheet with the person's info.
Sure, I'll have the driver do that.
Okay, where is it going to be?
Uh, thirty-five West Church Street, American Field.
This is River Edge.
Yeah, I know, that's the, oh, that's where the car is going, you want to, where it was?
Yeah.
One ninety-nine Kendrick Mac, the apartment.
Okay, and what's the, what kind of car is it?
It's a Nissan, the license plate is boy, nine, seven, Charlie, Frank Larry.
Okay, but you got my tow coming first, right?
Yeah, no, he's on his way to you, he'll be done in a couple of minutes.
Okay.
This was done already, this call, I should have called you before.
Oh, you already have the car?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
All right.
All right, you want to, can you fax me over one of those sheets?
Yeah, I'm going to have the driver send something to you in a couple of minutes as soon as he gets back to the shop.
Okay, thank you.
Bye-bye.
And you initiated that call? It seemed like you?
I called for the disabled, yeah.
Okay.
I don't know.
That part of it's not on there?
Yes, it's not on there at all.
Okay. Any other questions, sir?
I have a question, why isn't that part on there?
I can answer that.
Because it does sound like she initiated the call from the audio we just heard.
Yeah, yes and no, it looks like she, but then they, they talked about, when he said, do you have my info on the disabled, she said, yes, I already have it.
Oh.
That's not on there, so, it's a backup that she knew about the disabled, and then I think that the crux of it is that she, that it wasn't called in first, she indicated she already had it in her possession, and she tells them, this is what we have.
Okay.
So if he doesn't call, we don't know if that call comes in to the police department. Understand?
Yes.
Anything else?
No, no. Thank you.
Thank you.
We need the next, Chief, our Lieutenant Michael Walker. So again, just your name for the tape.
Lieutenant Michael Walker, River Edge Police Department.
Lieutenant Walker, you did some investigation, was part of this, correct?
Yes.
And, and you approved the, the two incident reports that were circulated to the mayor councils, correct?
Yes.
He signs off on it, because Officer Casey is not here.
Right.
But you, you reviewed his incident report, and it's accurate, correct?
Yes.
And, and the, the individual whose vehicle that was towed was, he came into the police rep, explain to us what happened, any interaction with that, with the, with the individual?
What had occurred was the individual whose car was towed, since we had never received information on who he was, you know, or the car, eventually reported the car stolen. And he came in, reported his car stolen, and we did a complete stolen car report investigation, put it into NCIC, which is the National Assistant for, you know, where information goes with for a car, so his car was put into the system throughout the country as stolen.
When did he come in and report his car stolen? It says seventeen twenty-eight hours.
Five twenty-eight PM.
PM, and this initially happened at twelve-thirty, correct?
Right.
And?
In the morning.
Okay, and if, at that point, you still had no paperwork from DeMoro towing?
No.
If you had that paperwork, then you wouldn't have been able to report, you wouldn't have reported, I'm assuming you wouldn't have reported the car stolen.
Correct, well, there'd be a couple of things there, remember that Officer Shaw understood this to be an impound, so with any impound, it would have been a motor vehicle, some is an officer responding, that's, that's our procedure. To have learned that it was going to be a private vehicle being taken, we would have, as you can, if you listened to my conversation with Mr. DeMoro, we certainly frowned upon that, and there's really no procedure for that. The ability to identify who the person even is, as you began to point out, you know, I call my neighbor's car, who, how do you even know who the person is without the police getting there, taking identification, and going about it away by signing complaints on it?
So the police department then logs this vehicle in when he comes in as a stolen vehicle?
Yes.
What happens then? When does it eventually come out?
Well, what occurs is the value of shift change, so it wasn't put together, you know, perhaps if he came in and reported stolen, when Officer Shaw's squad was working, they would have put it together, but they didn't put it together because we never got the information put into our CAD system. So now you have, that's generally what would happen, we would always do a check, if it was stolen, where it was stolen from, let's make sure we didn't have any cars towed down there for snow ordinances, for example, things like that. That couldn't be done, so we didn't get any information. So he comes in and reports the car stolen, we put it into the system, and then it starts to connect together that there's a car that was towed by DeMoro. I end up speaking with the victim in this case, because his car was taken, and we start to discuss what happened to his car, and we realized that DeMoro had taken it. And then, as we look into it further, we learn that, you know, there was three hundred dollar charge for taking his car and putting it there. As we look into it further, we find out that it's taken from a private space where neither the owner of the property nor the superintendent, which are usually our two main contacts with the situation where a car is stolen off private property, the owner certainly, because it's his property, or he delegates that power to the superintendent because he can do that. And they would be the individuals that would, would have us respond, sign the complaint, and we're aware of everything that's taking place, but we didn't have that.
Did the individual have to pay three hundred dollars to get his vehicle out?
Yes.
Or was that waived?
No.
I'm sorry, he had to pay for, to get it out?
Yes, he did.
How long have you been a police officer for that?
Twenty-five years.
Can you explain to us, have you been on, I mean, again, seen Officer Shaw, and explain to us, you could also explain to us, is it routine that a police officer, when a car, when a call comes in for a private tow, do you usually send an officer over there?
Yes, we're, we're, the normal procedures, we're contacted by, again, the property owner or the super, they contact us to say, hey, we have this car, it's got to be towed off the lot, or property, we respond, the officer takes the information, we sign the summons, we take their information, they sign a complaint, and then it's up to the property owner to contact the tow company, we don't get involved in that part of it.
Have you ever had a situation, as Councilman Minion pointed out, where a renter would just call and say, there's somebody in my spot, come, call to get it out?
If we've had that situation, we direct them to the super. There's just, there's just too many variables in an individual, you know, anyone from alluding there's somebody, you know, a Mr. Smith, and that car's in my spot, I don't know, maybe you just think I was walking down the street, maybe you're a neighbor that's not happy with them, you know, there's, it's just.
Why is it important for the police department to be aware of what's going on before the tow actually happens? Is it because simply this procedure where somebody will come in and report the vehicle stolen, it's not actually stolen?
That's certainly a big part of it, so that we don't, we don't, we put, you know, man-hours into taking this report for a stolen auto, this isn't something that occurs quickly, it's reports, it's computer entries, and, you know, then you have the entire country potentially looking for this car.
Did you do any further investigation on this matter?
Yes, well, in speaking to Mr. DeMoro, I did.
Okay, and I believe there's a tape on that, correct?
Yes, there is.
And you want to explain to us your conversation with her?
My conversation with her is inquiring about?
When did this take place? Couple of days after?
Yes, it was then a couple of days.
Okay.
After.
What was the purpose of the phone call?
To inquire what took place and why this car was taken, and then what we're going to do about this, you know, what is, it, I felt for the individual, his car was taken, and he paid three hundred dollars, so I spoke to Mr. DeMoro, one, about her practices and procedures as compared to the way the police department operates, and two, about now that it's been recognized that it was a mistake we made here, what can we do for this individual?
Are you aware, I mean, did you go down and inspect the site at all, the property, are you aware of any signs or anything that's in that area?
Yes, we did that subsequent to this occurring, we, we went down there, and we actually photographed many, many, the location where the car was towed from.
Do you have those photographs?
Chief has those photographs.
He can just give them to you, if you can just explain to them, and then just kind of pass them along.
Thank you.
What each one is, and then we'll just pass them, and we'll play the tape.
Pass to the right?
Yes. Just explain what that is.
This is a photo of just the front of the apartment complex.
When were these taken?
This morning.
This morning.
This is the spot, if you look at the spot, you'll see twenty-four faded, that's the spot that the car was towed from. The importance of this is one to show the spot was towed from, but there's no signage anywhere behind there. This is that same spot as a distance, out of distance.
You indicating a sign, meaning that it's on a tow, if you park here, you'll be towed?
Correct. It would be, if you have private property, and you have a contract with the tow company, and signage that indicates that, the signage has to appropriately indicate, one, that, you know, it's illegal to leave your car parked there unless you're assigned it, it has to indicate the name of the tow company, and it has to indicate the phone number for the tow company, right? And that's if you have a contract with the tow company, we don't have that anywhere that we're aware of in River Edge, and we're not aware of any private properties that have contracts with private tow companies.
And that's the Predatory Towing Prevention Act that you're referring to?
Correct. This is, this is a picture of a sign behind a plant, a yoke plant, as the chief pointed out. That's the closest this is to signage about, you can barely read it, it just points out that it's tenant parking only, but nothing about a private tow company, nothing stating an ordinance. That's what it looks like if you don't move the hedge. And again, even though that sign is there, we don't feel that it's appropriate signage to have conducted what they did, that's just a little bit of a distance, more of a distance.
Lieutenant, these photos were taken this morning?
Yes.
Is there anything more contemporaneous with the actual event?
No. We have no reason to believe that anything has changed on the property system.
She stated that there was a sign up there prior to the parking lot being repaid, did anyone contact the super or the landlord that the car had been removed?
No. Now, these, if you look, you know, the signs that are in these pictures as they're existing, so I would find it, you know, generally when somebody pays a lot and they do improvements, they're going to do improvement on their signage.
But clearly, the, the lack of signage also falls on the property owner to have those signs up, but again, if you're a towing operator and those signs aren't up, I'm going to assume then you shouldn't be performing the tow, because again, you also have an obligation under the Predatory Towing Act.
I would agree with that, and in addition to that, I would say that in speaking to other tow owners, that's what they have told us, that they would, they would certainly frown upon their drivers towing any cars of private property unless it's done appropriately.
Did you process the towing application? Was that your department or not?
The, yes, we do the background check.
The background check.
Yes.
Did you make the decision to decline it?
No, the chief of police makes that decision, after our detective bureau personnel look into the background checks.
Do you make a recommendation to the chief of all, his?
Not myself in this case, I haven't done the tow background checks for a while, but I believe Detective Chief, Sergeant Chief has conducted that.
Lieutenant, in, in speaking with the victim, did he indicate to you why he was there that evening? Was he a resident of that complex? If you recall?
I believe he was visiting a friend or something, I don't recall specifically why he was there, might be in the report from the other officer.
You have that tape also?
No, I was just going to ask, are there ever occasions where the police just issue a ticket or a summons, not, does it have to always end in a tow? Is it a situation similar to this?
What occurs is the, the property owner or the person who's going to sign a complaint, again, usually the property owner, the super, will sign the complaint, it's up to them, we don't get involved with the towing because that separates us, we don't, you know, say, you have to use our tow truck. It's up to them to call a tow company, if they choose not to, and we've had that before, you know, you'll have commuters that would park down by Mr. Bob's, for example, or by Total Wine, and the property owners will sign the complaints, and sometimes that suffices for them, like when the person comes, they're like, I got a ticket, I won't park here.
Right, they can get it.
Other times, they want the cars removed, and they call the tow company, and you'll just, we'll, we'll issue the tickets, we'll be aware of every car that was there, because specifically for reasons like this, so we don't do a stolen car investigation, and when people call up, we tell them, you know, the car was towed because it was parked on private property, which is very important, because you will, will absolutely get this whole call.
So the person whose car was towed, did he make a statement, was he notified to come tonight, and do you know the results, what happened, did he have to take the day off of work the next day to go get his car?
I don't know his personal circumstances as far as, you know, what inconvenience it was to come and report it, other than he did have to come and report it, he had to sign off on the report that he believed it to be stolen, and then he had the inconvenience of going to get his car, you know, tracking it down, and then coming up with the money, which was a significant amount for this individual.
The, the chief asked it, I thought he should be here, I didn't think it was necessary, he was, had enough already, and he was reimbursed, and I don't think he would add anything except that.
He was reimbursed with three hundred?
Yeah, during, during the court thing, that, my car wasn't there, and I came to the police department and did it, so I don't think he did anything.
But unless I missed something, the victim is the one that initiated this series of events by parking in a spot that wasn't his. So can we issue summons for that? Because if he doesn't park in that spot, and the spot is clearly marked as twenty-four, and we're not here, so I understand the victim, the victim, the victim, but by his improper actions, the victim started this whole series of events, so unless you, unless you tell me that I'm off base with that theory, it seems to me the victim is the owner, the rental, the person who rents the apartment, who gets home at after midnight and can't park their car because someone else made himself.
All right, except that, Councilman, you're, you're expressing an opinion, which is part of the deliberative process.
Yeah.
But right now, we're just going to hear the evidence.
Everybody's asking questions.
No, ask.
So my, my question is, why wasn't any summons?
You were making a statement.
Yeah, it's all, it's all in the injustice for all banner, so why wasn't any summons issued to the victim who parked his car in a spot that wasn't his?
Well?
Is there a reason for that?
There's, there's, there is a procedure that I think we've been discussing to a certain extent, that for it to be done properly, there needs to be signage, there needs to be somebody contacted the police department to issue that summons. If the signage was proper, and the police department was contacted by the super, the property owner, to say, hey, this car shouldn't be here, we have the proper signage, it needs to be removed because our tenant, it belongs to our tenant, that's what will take place, and we do do that, but it needs to be done in an appropriate way, so you don't have this haphazard manner where these things occur.
Understood, thank you.
Hear the tape.
We're, we're at this point because DeMoro has come to us to become a tower for River, on behalf of River Edge, right, and their application was denied because of this?
Every, yes, correct.
Okay, is this a renewal or?
Yes, it's a renew, every year, everyone has, on the approved list, has to?
Be renewed.
Be renewed.
Or, or written procedures given to all of the companies on how these types of circumstances should be handled, because I'm not clear from either testimony yet whether there is a clear procedure.
Procedures to what?
For if, should the tenant, do we have an ordinance or something that says the tenant must call the police department first?
No, there's no one.
Should we? I just wonder whether there's a lot of ambiguity, and is that how it should be, or should there be less ambiguity?
I don't think you would put that in a ordinance, the procedure or protocol, the, according to what the officers are testifying or saying, and I believe also what DeMoro towing also indicated, is they are not going to go remove a car unless they call it in. But the simple fact is, if it's a repo, repossession or that, they're going to let them know, because you may call up and say, somebody's stealing a car, they're going down, an accident can happen. So I think everybody is on procedure, they know what the procedure is, they get a call before they remove the vehicle, they call the police department and say, either we have a repossession, or we have a private tow, and we're going to do that, and I believe that's what even DeMoro also testified to. So I don't think there, you should have, or there should be a procedure in, in place, I think, well, I reserve what I think, but to answer your question, there is not.
It's not.
There is a state law, though, the thirty-nine, four fifty-six, that asks you to deal with private property, and again, when that's properly posted, it's understood by tow companies and police departments and property owners that that governs this, if you would, that says there's a law.
And when the towing company signs a contract with the borough, is that in the contract?
It's not with the borough.
Excuse me?
They don't sign a contract with the borough. The borough, this is private property, so the borough would not be calling them out, it would be for the property owner to call out, the borough's only going to call out if it was a car accident, that disabled vehicle, they would be called, and they just go on the rotating list. The Predatory Towing Prevention Act is, puts guidelines in place as to what the, what a private property owner needs to do, and what a towing company has to do, number one is there needs to be a contract, number two is there needs to be a sign that's posted that says, hey, look, you, you park here, you're that says, hey, look, you park here, your vehicle's going to be towed away, and it's going to be towed away by this person, and here's the phone number. And that's, that's the procedure, pretty much.
And just, everyone be mindful that they pled guilty to borough ordinance 453-2B, so that has already been established, that is undisputed fact. If we can listen to the tape.
I only have that one to listen.
Do you have any others?
I just had one other question, would that number have been difficult to see at nighttime?
Which number?
The faded number on the parking lot?
I'm looking at the picture that is today, and it is, and it's also indicating that it was renewed, it's interesting to think that it was renewed when it's faded.
And also, she mentioned spot 24, 27, but that picture you took is a 24.
Oh, there's three. Let me start it, if you hear the phone dialing, that's our phone call, your voice there. Just in place.
Demaro, Ellen.
Yes, hi, Mary.
Yes.
Hi, Lieutenant Walker, River Edge, speak for me.
Hi.
How are you?
I think I'm in trouble.
I hope not.
What's up?
We're trying to, I'm just, I just came in and, well, Officer Casey just went over this incident with the Nissan Murano that was towed over the weekend, and I'm just trying to figure out exactly what happened, because it sounds like a civilian complained about a car on private property, and then you guys just towed it.
What happened was Theresa Rodriguez called us and said somebody was parked in her parking spot in her apartment complex. So, she called the super and the super didn't answer, she said, so she called me, it was a little, I don't know what time it was, I know it was late, maybe before midnight or after midnight, I don't know. When she called, then she called us to tow it, and then I called my driver, I said, go pick this car 199 River Edge Road and have the tenant sign my ticket, because that's what we do in all the other towns, if a tenant, if someone's parked in someone else's spot, the procedure is, the tenant signs it if they can't get in touch with the super or the property owner. The woman, it was late and the woman wanted to get into her apartment, and she couldn't because someone was in her spot, so we towed it. So, I had called the PD, and apparently, I guess, I didn't use the correct wording, but I thought I said to the police officer, because he called me for an accident, and I said to him, oh, I said, I just did a private property impound, and I said at 199 River Edge Road, I said, I'll call you at the, with this plate. But he thought, I guess, from what Officer Casey told me, that he thought I said it was a recovery.
Well, that's the only reason you guys should be picking up a car without our involvement, short of, you know, somebody calling you wanting to tow privately, but there's no reason for you to go take a car like this, you know, there needs to be either the super or the property owner.
Right, he explained that to me.
Right.
And I said that to him, I was like, well, for the future, I said, Gary's going over to talk to that particular property owner, because the building right next door to it, we do all the towing out of there, and.
Well, it's not a problem if the super signs a, you know, a complaint, a ticket for it, or if the super, if the super and you just go and do it, then that's between you and the super, but the problem we have is that, you know, this guy didn't know where his car was, and we didn't know where it was.
But I told the police officer I had it.
But we didn't get any paperwork, we didn't even know what the car was, because the guy never, your driver, he'd be our officer, you know, when you listen to, I'll talk on the way you can sit, but when you listen to the phone call, it was, oh, the driver will drop off the paperwork, which again, leads you to believe that it's a repo. So, the problem is this, is that it's a, you know, basically, you guys tow the car just based on a civilian complaint.
Complaint, right.
And then it gets put into NTIC, so for all intents purposes, the car was stolen.
Okay.
You know, so, you know, the problem, and I guess the more so the time I look, I'm saying, I sit here and try and complain for stealing a car against Mary Demaro, but the guy had to pay this fee, and he was never required to do so.
Well, did we ask the guy why he was talking to someone else's parking spot?
Doesn't matter, that's not our problem, and that's not your problem either.
Okay.
You know what I mean? Because it's not public, it's not public property, and that becomes the, just like you said earlier, the super's problem, and you know what, if the tenant can't get the super, that's not my problem, that's not your problem either.
Okay.
You know, so I don't.
Well, I'm not doing it anymore, and I just told that Gary's going over to talk to the super, and I said to him, from now on, if we don't have signage yet, because like I said, we do the towing in the, couple of the apartments in River Edge, and it's never been a problem.
Right.
And now I understand the problem now is because.
If the super, like I said, or the property owner, I think you stand pretty good ground because they represent the property.
Right.
But when you get, I mean, think about it, I can go down there because you live next to me and I'm pissed off, and I don't like you, and I just called, you know, Demaro Towing, and they towed the car, and I go back upstairs and start laughing, you know, you know, there's nothing, you know, just because somebody requested, and I'm not saying that's the case with this, so the lady, you know, wanted her spot, but she needs to take that up with the super.
Right.
So, listening, would you be able to talk to Gary about the tow bill itself and see if you guys can do something with it, because I'm just trying to keep this guy, he's on to it a little bit, he's like, he's starting to do his homework and realize, wait a minute, I may have parked my car in the wrong spot, but there's no ticket on it, and a civilian requested, the property owner didn't request it, so, you know, in attempt to keep him.
Yeah, just, yeah, so, well, if you call back, just give them our number and we'll deal with it, but even if, even if the car was there, you wouldn't issue a ticket on that if it's from the police department.
Not from the police department, but we would go down there and fill out the summons, and the property owner would sign it, or the super, that's how we do it.
Oh, but even the tenant couldn't do that then?
No, the tenant can't because, think about it, this.
No, she couldn't sign the ticket?
The tenant can't sign a ticket for private property, they don't own the property, they just rent.
Yeah, but she rented that spot, that spot she paid for, that parking spot.
I don't believe the tenant's able to do that because they don't own the spot.
But she rented, she.
They need to.
No, the spots are paid for in that particular parking lot. I'm going to find out a little more info from the actual, I'm going to see, does the guy live there?
No, he doesn't live, he doesn't live in that, right there, he lives nearby, and understandably, he's worn for parking there, however, the way that it was done about, all it would have taken is if the super for the apartment complex came out or called you and said, tow it, I'm good to go with it.
Okay.
But we have a civilian that doesn't have that authority.
Okay.
And then you guys get caught up in it because you're just thinking, all right, let me go, you know, well, you want to go, well, go tow it.
Well, in other apartment complexes that we do do, the tenants are allowed to call it.
Yeah, well, that's not here, and that would, I tell you, that's, you can't roll the dice with it, because how you, you know, how do you even know the tenant really has the authority, they don't own the spot or anything, you're just taking that word of mouth.
No, they sign, they write their name down and their phone number, I don't just let, I don't just go there, and I make sure that that is.
At the end of the day, it could just, you know, at the end of the day, that's going to be a tough one for you. If you, I mean, next time, if you guys talk to you, I'll show you a business attorney, I would run that fine just so you don't get jammed up, but it's like, it's just a civilian, who the hell even knows who they really are?
Yeah.
You know? Hey, I'm just saying for your own.
Hold on for a minute.
All right.
Sorry about that.
Hey, that's all right. Hey, so, if you, if you and Gary talk about it, what I'll do is I'm going to call them back, I'll, you know, just try to calm it down a little bit, but I'm going to tell them that I'll just leave it at this, he, to call you and, you know, and just go over with you, and maybe he can, he's able to discuss with you, and there's something you guys can do about it.
Not a problem.
All right?
I appreciate it, sorry again, like I said, it won't happen again.
No, that's all right, I mean, hey, just get us involved, you know, at the end of the day, just request a warrant, we'll court, meet you down there.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with that, if our car went down there and our guys made a mistake, I'd be all over it, I have no problem with that, but if, you know, I think they, unless they make a mistake, they're going to go down there and go, wait a minute, you need the super, the property owner to do this.
Okay.
And that way, you guys, you're just, you know, you're just waiting for the green light from whether it be your property owner or the police, then.
No, you're absolutely right.
You know?
Now, let me ask you something, if we have signage up there that says, you know, if we have a sign that says no parking, would we still need to do it through the super, or?
I think you really need to do it through the super.
Always.
Because, because, look, it's just, you're, I mean, then you're going to get into a problem with your drivers making a positive identification on anyone who signs off on this, you know, and you're going to have people sooner or later, somebody's just going to screw with you.
Right.
Because they're pissed off at the neighbor or something, you know?
Well, this chick just wanted to go in her house, and actually, to be perfectly honest with you, with my sister.
Yeah, all right.
But she called us, she was like, this is my mom, it's in my spot, she was like, I'm, you know, she just drove up from, you know, they were driving for four hours, and she just wanted to go and, you know, go to bed, and there was no place for her to park, and her.
Right.
The super didn't answer the phone.
And that being the case, again, if you called us, we would have had a guy go down there, and we would, because we could always get the super.
Right.
I mean, like, listen, you know, the car's in the wrong spot, so understanding that the spots are rented specifically in this location.
Right.
If that's true, then we're okay, we'll, you know, we'll stop, we sign the summons, put in our car, let them tow it, and they, they're good with that.
All right.
You know?
That's what we'll do in the future.
All right.
Sorry, see your police, see your child, I'm such.
No, that's all right, we, you know, hey, we sort it out, so it doesn't have to get.
All right, thanks, bye.
Pass the shoulders.
Hi, Mary, Demaro?
How are you?
Good, I have a private property impound, I can give you, the plate that the front car.
All right, whatever. Are you guys taking it right now?
Yeah.
You have the paperwork, are you?
Demaro not work out a deal or reimbursement with this owner, is that why they were issued a summons, or how did that all get to a point where she got cited and then had to go to court?
It sounded good at the end of the phone call, but it didn't work, it didn't work out, so we had to sign that complaint. For whatever reason, he was never reimbursed, he called me back, and we, we had, I discussed it with an AP to the level of, you know, is it a stolen car, or where do we go with this, and he suggested using a borough ordinance, so the borough ordinance was signed, and in court, it was a plea agreement to reimburse the individual.
AP's Assistant Prosecutor. Any other questions, Detective?
Nope.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Creedy? Chief Creedy, you made the ultimate decision to deny the applicant a towing license, what did you base your decision on? Not to regurgitate everything we just heard, what was your ultimate decision in mind?
As was mentioned annually, there's a review of the applicants, in this case, it was actually Detective Varekia who conducted the background, he goes out and checks the lots, the locations, as well as any incident reports that may have come up during the year. I was aware of this matter after it had taken place, the matter discussed this evening, including the fact that the prosecutor's office in form of an AP having been contacted to weigh in on the matter, and the fact that the individual whose vehicle was towed went down for reimbursement and wasn't provided with reimbursement for the vehicle having been removed, led to charges being filed, went to court, restitution was made, in reviewing the recommendation of Detective Varekia, the chief's recommendation that Demaro Towing not be renewed on the list for this year, that they apply again next year, and in review of the Predatory Towing Prevention Act, it was clear to me that this is a statute that should be familiar as a, as a protocol for all towing companies to be making reference to, it's been in effect since 2007, it's very clear in the, in the statute about how a vehicle can be removed, what the provisions are for that, and considering all of these factors, in addition to the element that in my 29 years, I've never seen a vehicle removed from private property without a summons having been issued for 39-456.6, which is a statute providing for prohibition against parking on private property without the property owner's consent, and reviewing the calls that were associated with this, and to hear Demaro Towing state that they do this all the time, gave me pause for concern, and that concern left me to deny their application.
All right, any questions? Nope. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I suggest that we deliberate on this and make our decision December 20, our last meeting, December 23rd, we'll take a vote, or we'll put the decision on the record, we'll give it to the appellant in writing, what the council's decision is on the appeal.
Does that mean that from this point, they can continue to work, or they can't do anything until we make a decision?
They're on the list for 2014.
They're on the list for this year.
So, they're on the list, just 2014.
Then they can reapply 2015.
That's correct.
You know, we're new. All right? Anybody want to decide it sooner, or?
I would make a motion for one year.
You want to just?
Just to uphold it or to reverse?
Yeah.
That's all.
That's all it is.
To uphold the chief's decision.
The chief's decision or to reverse.
And the, the appeal is on good cause, that they're asking that you reverse the police department's decision, denying them the applicant, or the license, based on offensive moral property.
Ma'am?
Yep. Is it Demaro?
Yes. Show you one thing, then?
Anything you want. This is the sign that picture was taken a year ago, I went here today, and it is overgrown, and you cannot see it today, but this is from a year ago, so it was clearly, you know.
Lieutenant Walker, want to show it to Lieutenant Wallis?
That's from a year ago. Overgrown, it was here then. I showed that to him, in the last of the statutes, right? Okay, but I'm just, it's not overgrown, that's all. I understand. We should decide it tonight. Yeah.
I would make a motion to uphold the chief's recommendation for the suspension for the rest of this year.
Second. We should have some sort of discussion.
Well, no, I don't think there's very new evidence tonight that would convince me to overturn the chief's decision, that's basically my position.
I'm just saying we should discuss it at this point, merely for the fullness of the record.
Yes, but I just put, I just put my reason on the record.
I understand.
I think so too, there's a motion and a second, the only thing we, you could, you could do is.
Deliberate it right now, I'm talking about.
Is if you want to, if you want to table the vote to deliberate, then we can vote on that first.
No, I would just open it up for discussion at this point, so we can conduct our deliberations.
I agree, Council, bar, any discussion, I would like that, or at least make our statements as to why we are, we're doing. That's, that's all I'm saying.
All right, so there's a motion and a second to deliberate, and takes precedence over the motion for the ultimate resolution.
I am not going to say that, that implies legal, just like unexpected.
So, let's have a vote on it, let's have a vote on the deliberation motion, are we going to deliberate tonight, or are we going to deliberate until the final meeting?
No, I would make the motion that we deliberate right now.
I second that.
Let's have a local.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
But just starting off, Webster's defines an act of moral turpitude as an act or behavior that gravely violates the moral sentiment or accepted moral standards of the community. So, that's what the, the ordinance reads, that's really, I think, what we have to judge in whether to uphold the decision or not, did the actions of Demaro Towing, is it so, does it gravely violate our moral sense? And that's the decision that we're making. Just throwing that out there for purposes of discussion.
I believe that because it was her sister, they kind of just went right for it, they did not follow proper protocol or procedure, and in that instance where you have a relative that can kind of help you out, you could pick up the phone, and you say, do it, and they do it, and then they try to backtrack with the paperwork, it was never put in, you know, there was just, you know, you have a person inconveni- it was never put in, you know, there was just, uh, you know, you have a person inconvenienced beyond, so I find that to be really just egregious, so.
Agreed to, I'm sorry, to do?
To, to do that, to, to, you know, call up.
Tow.
Well, when you know it's your sister.
Right, it's egregious to tow.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, I thought, uh, Demaro might have been naive, ignorant, cocky, even, kind of to your point, that their sister
Thirty-five years.
But, um, but they'd been in business 35 years, this is the only, uh, situation they had. And, um, I, I think, uh, at the end, uh, when the chief spoke, um, Demaro dropped the, you had op- they had opportunities, they dropped the ball a couple times, they could have, uh, had that paperwork over earlier in the morning, for whatever reason, didn't happen to the police department, Mr. Moore said she was going to do it, came very, very late, did not, in a timely fashion, they could have paid the, the money back to the person's car they towed, right? But, uh, while that didn't happen, they had to be taken to court, so that it seems to me that they dropped the ball, uh, I don't know why, but they didn't take those actions. And, um, yeah, I think it's, uh, I think a pause of a year is, uh, under those circumstances, yeah, I think it's justified. We're not, no one's saying you can never come to River Edge again, but, uh, to have that pause, I think that's appropriate. At, at the same time, real quick, Demaro's not dumping sinks on Route 17 and hiding in a bush and waiting for someone to run over it either, I mean, I, I wouldn't say you're predatory, like, you know, you're not pulling that jazz, but anyway, so I think, uh, a pause in, uh...
All right, any further discussion?
Um, council, uh, councilman?
I'm sorry.
Councilor Solis. Um, Ms. Solis, the way I thought you framed it, I'm sorry.
Counselier.
Sorry. The way I thought you framed it, the question that is before us is whether there, I believe, uh, if you could clarify it, good cause to reverse, or could you re-
Sure.
-reframe that?
The, the statute for the appeal says, "The conviction of any crime," there's no crime here, "for any offense involving moral turpitude may acted disqualify the towing operator. A disqualification may be waived by the borough upon a showing of good cause." So I believe it's the, uh, not, I believe it would be the, uh, appellant here, Demaro Towing, to come up here and to show good cause as to why the, the denial should be overturned.
Okay. That's what I thought. So, it's, it's not a question whether the, the chief was correct, the question is, have, have Demaro shown good cause to overturn?
Um, yeah, correct.
Okay. So, um, the, I do not know whether this is a, uh, I, I do not wish to weigh in, let me rephrase that. I do not wish to weigh in whether I think this was an appropriate decision or not, because that's not what's before me. What's before me, if I understand it correctly, is has good cause been shown to overturn?
That's correct. The, the police department found that they are not in their judgment, they are not, um, a company that, or they should be disqualified based on an offense involving a moral turpitude, based on what you've just heard. So, that was their decision. Um, the, the ultimate decision now is, did, was there enough to show good cause to reverse that decision? Okay? You may come up with the decision, no, there was, there's not enough evidence to disqualify them. I mean, that all goes to the good cause. If there simply wasn't enough evidence, um, they, the police department really had no right to disqualify them based on everything that, that base, that happened here. So, yeah.
So that second question is open?
Kind of goes to the end and end.
Yeah. Two parts?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, not, not that they, they have carte blanche, they can do it, I mean, now the appellant's coming here and saying, "We want to show good cause why it should be overturned, these are the reasons why."
Okay.
I just have one more comment. I believe that they were not being truthful when they said that the parking lot was being repaved. From the pictures, you can see that it's all busted up and it's faded, and, uh, that would be an inaccuracy, I believe.
All right, does anybody have it, is there any further discussion?
No.
All right.
I'm good.
Now, if anybody would like to make a motion?
I make a motion for one year suspension.
You can't?
Yes.
Right.
Just to approve or deny?
Up home?
You should make an emotion, I'm going to do it.
Assume to deny the appeal. Let's leave it at that, okay?
That's what we do, yes.
To deny Demaro's towing appeal.
Well, it's that, I make the motion.
And I'll second it.
There's a motion and a second to deny the appeal by Demaro Towing for the, uh, 2014 approved towing rotating, rotating list. Can I have a roll call, please, Judy?
Councilwoman Murphy. Yes. Councilman Aquafreda.
Yes.
Councilman Capola.
Yes.
Councilman Barrow.
Yes.
Councilman Capelio.
Yes. All right, that's your answer, Mr. Demaro.
Thank you.
All right, let's go into the, we still have the, we're going to go into the eight o'clock B, and then we'll go back into the work session. We're very late, it's not the eight o'clock B. Can we all please stand for a moment of silent prayer and/or reflection? Let's have our deputy borough clerk lead us in a salute to the flag.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So, New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. The mayor and council of the borough of River Edge have caused notice of this meeting to be published by having a daytime place posted in the borough hall, and notices were sent to the record in the regular news. The mission of the governing bodies to provide essential services through the establishment and implementation of public policy, to safeguard our infrastructure, providing honest, courteous, and professional services, establishing a sense of trust and accomplishment with our residents. We do this through research and prudent planning, seeking to minimize risk while improving municipal services. We are always sensitive to the needs of our taxpayers while realizing that the, this governing body cannot be all things to all people within the revenue constraints that have been imposed by state mandates, present economic conditions, and prevailing attitudes about taxation. We have three exits in council chambers, two to the front and one to the rear, we're on the record any, uh, we're on the record both, um, by audio and video. So, anything that is said is, uh, is being recorded. If a member of the public wishes to be heard, all they need to do is give us their name and address, and they can make any statement or answer any question. Can I have a roll call, please, town clerk?
Here.
Present.
Here.
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 Present. All right, can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the mayor and council work session, a regular meeting of December 2nd, 2013?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the mayor and council for closed session meetings that were previously approved on October, for August the 5th, December 16th, October the 7th, October 21st, October 28th, and November 25th, 2013?
Mayor, I'd like to, um, put in a, um, to abstain for August 5th.
So moved. So noted, we have a motion.
Also, mayor, I just abstain as to the November 25th meeting.
So noted, November 25th. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Subject to those abstentions. All right, we have a proclamation this evening for the River Edge Fire Department Companies 1 and 2. I know we have members of the fire department here, I'll, uh, we have two proclamations. They're both the same, okay. All right, let me read the proclamation to the record. Whereas on the evening of October 29th, 2012, Hurricane Sandy struck River Edge with all despite and theory bringing high winds gusting in excess of 75 miles an hour and heavy rains. Whereas the winds and rain brought on severe flooding, downed high voltage power lines, downed trees into homes and on our roadways. Whereas this resulted in trapping motors in their vehicles, residents were trapped in their homes due to downed wires and trees, high levels of carbon monoxide emergencies due to improper portable generator use. Whereas River Edge Fire Company is number one and number two operated during this period for 36 continuous hours under the above hazardous conditions to mitigate the aforementioned emergencies. Whereas Hurricane Sandy struck the New Jersey Shore causing severe damage to the infrastructure of those communities. And whereas on November 4th, 2012, a special statewide fire service task force was coordinated to assist local shore communities by conducting searches, providing relief assistance to those ravaged areas. Whereas the River Edge Fire Department was assigned to the task force, force, and provided seven, five fighters, an engine, and an emergency equipment to assist the Silverton Fire Department in Tom's River, New Jersey, with emergencies, evacuations, and relief efforts for a period of 36 hours. Therefore, let it be proclaimed by the authority, and as recommended by the chief of the River Edge Fire Department, John H. Mowley, that unit citations be awarded to the River Edge Fire Departments, Companies 1 and 2, for their acts of professionalism, courage, and dedication to the residents of River Edge and to the neighboring communities during these times of natural disaster. All right. I remember the, I don't think I was there for all 36 hours, but I tried to be. But I remember the trip down to Silverton for, uh, three days.
That was a great mission.
Thank you.
I know you went down, you were right?
Yes.
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have some appointments and personnel changes on our agenda to approve the resignation of Tom Gale Crossengard, effective November 29th, 2013. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
To approve the resignation of Emma Yooms, tax collection clerk, effective December 13th.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
To approve the appointment of the 2014 Citizens Budget Committee members as follows, Anthony Barberi, Al Rulman, Kenneth Krauthheim, and Michael Gensch.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we have correspondence and, uh, letters which are available as listed on the agenda for review by the public with the borough clerk. In addition, we have monthly reports regarding property code enforcement, the planning board, the tax collector, uh, for, uh, 2013 and for the month of November specifically, that are on record. This evening we have liaison reports, uh, Councilwoman Murphy, DPW Shade Tree, Senior Citizen, Shared Services, any reports this evening?
Yeah, report tonight.
Councilman Aquafreda, beautification, uh, zoning, River Edge, Riverdale schools.
None report, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Capola, construction code official, property maintenance, senior SCORE and historic commission.
Thank you, mayor. Yes, I, uh, today went to the SCORE Holiday Extravaganza, um, at 11 o'clock, and it was well attended, we had a great time, there was songs, coffee, cake, coffee cake, coffee cake, and, uh...
Was there cake and then coffee?
I ate some, I had mud pie and cranberry cake and apple pie and coffee cake and three cups of coffee, so, yeah, I'm, I'm good, I'm good, I'll be up till tomorrow.
Trying to fatten you up, huh?
Uh, it was good, that's it, thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Mignone, police department, environmental, green team, planning board, shared services.
Um, green team's meeting tomorrow night, so no report on that. Planning board, there is no agenda this month, so there is no meeting.
Thank you. Councilman Bartiloni, rec commission, traffic and safety, special events, technology, shared services.
Nothing to report, mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Papaleo, uh, firefight prevention, River Edge Alliance Against Alcohol and Drugs.
Thank you, mayor. The fire department had 12 calls since, uh, December 1st, including two motor vehicle crashes, one of which required the use of the joys of life rescue tool to, uh, extricate a patient. Members of the rescue company were able to quickly and safely remove the patient in 19 minutes from the time of dispatch, that's just 13 minutes from arrival on scene, which is an excellent job and reflects their ability. Santa was delivered by the fire department at the annual, uh, tree lighting ceremony on December 7th. After the tree lighting, the children had an opportunity to sit and talk with Santa in the warmth of Company 1 headquarters. A fund was found, uh, was had by all. We thank, uh, the fire department for offering this, um, facility. Due to the ice conditions, uh, icy conditions on Sunday, uh, December 15th, Santa's a ride around town with the fire department had to be rescheduled for Sunday, December 22nd, and will arrive at about 1:30 and ride around town until all streets are visited, so, for residents, December 22nd. Um, Great Cridy is the new departmental chief-elect, effective January 1st, 2014. We wish him all the best and, uh, bring home, uh, bring them all home safely. Um, that is the fire department, very proud of them. The Reed for River Edge Alliance Against Drug and Alcohol Abuse. Uh, mayor, just one second while I pull that report Uh, the report is from Maria Papaleo, the River Edge Alliance Against Drugs is happy to report that we are being funded, uh, again next year, thanks to Alan Negrion, attending two mandatory meetings, alliance chairperson completing long and difficult forums that are now required by the governor's office. The funding will be continued until June 2014, and then a new fiscal year will begin. At that time, uh, Reed will receive approximately the same funding as last year. For the next six months, we will receive half the funding to hold this over until June, and any money is not spent this year will be carried over until next year. The last quarter was spent funding so, um, so much needed materials for the River Edge Library, um, and other, uh, and the belly dancer, believe not, for the class in January of the mayor's wellness program. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. I have a brief report from the River Edge Volunteer Ambulance Service. Uh, thus far, the ambulance service has responded to 520 calls to date. The ambulance service served, and were on duty for the Alzheimer's Walk at Vansoet Park, and also were on duty for the Turkey Trot at St. Peter's. The members have, uh, all taken their CPR classes and have all been recertified. Uh, all members are now up to date with their certifications. Respectfully submitted Donna R. Sanders, captain, River Edge Volunteer Ambulance Service is always looking for new members. If any member of the public wishes to serve on, uh, this organization, uh, which is a very worthwhile organization, all they need to do is contact them. Thank you.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I'm, um, a little out of order. While we were going through the, um, citizens budget, um, appointments, we did have someone else that was interested in participating, Kathy Kazlin, so I'd like to make a motion to, um, appoint her onto that committee as well. Second.
Kathy Kazlin.
Her address is, uh, 249 Greenway, Tarris.
There's a motion and a second by Councilman Mignone. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, there are no witnesses out for first reading or second reading, there are resolutions by consent. Um, any member of the council have, would like to pull out a resolution for separate discussion, consideration, or a vote? I know we had some additional, uh, were, were there any additional discussion on the bylaws, Resolution 13-449?
I'd like to pull that one out for separate vote.
All right. Let's deal with the, uh, let's deal with the 13-447, up to and including 13-460. We can do separately the bylaws and separately the payment of bills. Would any, could I have a motion to approve the remainder of those resolutions by consent?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, 13-449, the bylaws, the, the, the bylaws, let's get to the bylaws. I had a -- I don't know if, Al, you saw this or not, but in Section 2 of the bylaws, Paragraph C.
Hold on.
If you can get there.
Article one?
Article -- Article 1, Section 2, Paragraph C, the third line says, "These officers shall be residents of the borough." It seems to have a residency requirement for everybody except the borough attorney, engineer, and building inspector. I don't know if you meant to put that in there with the residency requirement or not. It's just a question that I had. I've read through them more closely.
Sure.
It basically mean that, you know, our borough administrator would have to move to the --
Well, I mean, if you continue reading on, "The council can exempt officers from the residency requirement." That language, again, is taken directly from the statute as -- I don't have the exact statute in front of me, but that is statutory language, and the council can exempt officers if they so choose.
All right, well, do you think it should be in there?
We can delete it.
Yeah, I mean, you could delete it.
There's no -- if and when any of those positions become vacant, we can always add or subtract requirements, so there's no need to have it in there.
We are deleting then everything after the word "council," after the second sentence, correct?
We guess so, yeah.
Because of all kind of --
Well, yeah.
Other than the --
Yeah.
So.
Do we need the article?
The officers are appointed, so they're on the duties required by law and witnesses of the council.
Yeah.
So beginning with the word "other"?
Yeah, the entire thing then would be deleted.
Okay. I have to move to -- I still keep my seat.
They create an exemption on the --
Yeah. Alan, I don't know if I can point exactly to it, but there are some changes in process and procedure that these bylaws will implement, one of which is the recording of closed sessions, which by an electronic device, which Borough Attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, it's not required by statute. You have to keep adequate minutes, but the electronic recording of closed sessions is not statutorily required. The council should know that in 1990, this was deliberated by that council, and they felt at that time that they would not electronically record the closed session -- sessions or meetings because they felt it would chill the process. It would chill the ability of the elected officials to speak frankly at that time. So they decided not to electronically record those meetings. But I think these bylaws would require that. Yeah, the section is Article 6, meet -- which is the meeting section. It's Section 2, which is the time and the place for the meeting, and the language is, "All work sessions shall begin at 7:00 PM, or regular meetings shall begin at 8:00 PM." All work sessions, and it says in parentheses, "Including closed or executive session." Special meeting, public meeting shall be recorded by tape recorder or other electronic means in order to preserve the record. And presently, we do not record executive or closed session meetings so that we can have a free discussion.
I see we strike that clause.
Well, if you're so inclined, then I guess after the word "all," you would remove every work session, the parentheses, "Including closed or executive session, special meetings," and simply say, "All public meetings." I think the closed session is not a --
Is it a public meeting?
Is not a public meeting.
So we just -- we're going to eliminate from work sessions to special meetings. Okay, we're going to start that sentence, "All public meetings shall be recorded by the --"
Yes.
Yes.
All right. And then I had a question on the order of business, because I thought that, Al, I thought that you said that we were going to change, and I thought it was a good suggestion, we were going to change the order of business so that the public got to comment before we adopted resolutions.
It's Section 1F, open public -- open meeting to the public on any issue on the agenda. It's right after Borough Administrator's topic.
That's under work session, right?
Yes. Section 3 is regular session.
It didn't get --
So what are we looking at?
Oh, no, here, there's open meeting to the public and issue.
It's G on the second one. It's F and G.
Closed minutes, okay. You mean, Section 3, regular session?
Yes.
Yeah. Section 1, it's F, and Section 3, it is G.
G. I see you have G, which is open to the public.
Yes.
And then you have O, which is open to meeting to the public.
On any issue.
Okay.
The initial is just something that's an agenda item.
So it's twice during the public -- during the regular session, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I got it.
And a lot of towns are going that way. They're opening it up two times, one specifically to discuss what's on the agenda, and then the second time is --
Our Board of Education does that as well. The River Edge Board. I don't know about Riverdale, but the River Edge Board does that.
We have -- in the beginning of the meeting, we have comments on agenda items only.
Yeah.
And at the end of the meeting, we have a free-for-all, but we limit three minutes. Three minutes per public.
Yeah, I don't know if that's in here.
No, I didn't want to --
I mean, I don't know if you want to discuss that, putting some type of restriction in some bylaws, put a time on it and give you something.
Could it be like at the discretion, you know?
No.
Just so that we know.
The meeting doesn't --
No, I know, but can you say three minutes or at the discretion of, you know?
Our large audience participation, I don't know. That's going to be a problem.
I think the only time it's been a problem is when we've had some of those public hearings.
Some of them are five minutes, some of them are, you know --
It's a long time, five minutes.
Some are five minutes, some are, you know, five minutes per person because the same person can't get up at three or four times and speak for five minutes each time. We really haven't -- the only time that ever becomes an issue is when we have big public hearings, like the Park Avenue or something like that.
It's usually not much of an issue.
Alan. Mayor, I feel I have to speak to this one also, at least as the council. Article 2, under Mayor, Section 8. This mandates that the mayor keep a calendar of events that's published, the first meeting detailing all appointments, meetings that he or she attended, and --
I don't see that in my version.
No?
Was that revised?
That was revised and taken out a while back.
Thank you. I think we do a pretty good job of keeping the council informed as to what the mayor has been invited to and --
Yeah, that was taken out after the first revision, many --
I think additional burden placed on the clerk's office.
Many, many months ago.
Why, in my version, I put today's date. All right, so we made a couple of changes. Would council like to see a finished copy before they vote on it, or they like to vote on it tonight?
I would recommend we accept those changes and approve bylaws this evening.
Say second F.
I'll put third F.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the bylaws as --
I'd like to see a finished copy.
As of tonight?
I'd like to just see the finished copy.
There's a motion and a second.
All right. Does anybody have a second for -- because your motion is in the way of to table it until it's a final version, so you would need a second, and then there would have to be a vote. If there's no second, then we'll just vote on it straight up. All right, there's no second. Let's have a roll call on the motion by, was it Ed?
Yeah.
Motion by Ed, seconded by --
No.
No.
Councilman Capola.
Yes.
Councilman Mignone.
Yes.
Councilman Bartiloni.
Yes.
Councilman Papaleo.
Yes.
All right. What if this was adopted for the year 2020?
Yeah.
You're adopting something.
At least they finally repealed the 1930 bylaws.
That didn't adopt it. That just said that we weren't going to wait a week to --
No, that's just adopted.
No, it was adopted.
I thought you --
No, it was adopted.
That was adopted.
No, we're going to make the changes, and you're not going to change whatever discussed. All right. 13-461, the payment of bills. Have our finance chair read that resolution.
Whereas vouchers for the payment of goods and services rendered to the Borough River Edge have been received, and whereas each bill has been checked by the receiving department, approved by the Chief Financial Officer and Borough Clerk, and reviewed by the three members of the Finance Committee, now therefore be it resolved that bills listed now be confirmed for payment from the appropriate funds as follows. Current account, $471,032.42. Capital account, $211,320.75. Recreation account, $272.30. Trust other account, $9,548.14. Open space account, $11,186.20. Trust others developers account, $687.50. So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Did we move on 450 to 460?
Yes.
We did.
All right, can I have a motion open hearing to the public?
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, now, let's still let the council be aware that we do have to go back into our work session and discuss our 2014 budget, the proposed River Edge Fire Department policy regarding the consumption of alcoholic beverages, a proposed meeting date for our consideration of a special improvement district, and any unfinished or new business, so just to be on the -- just to be aware of that. Would any member of the public like to speak on any issue? The floor recognizes Mary Donahue.
Good evening, all. I thought that tonight we were going to approve a resolution for an application for a grant by the River Edge Historical Commission. I think that was on the agenda tonight.
We did.
It is.
We approved it. It was lumped in with all the other.
Well, then I want to thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is a very important grant that we're applying for because we have many historical documents and photographs that are being housed right now in schools, libraries, the Borough Hall, private homes, and we should consolidate all of our historical material. And we want to thank you very, very much for your support.
Would this grant give you funding to consolidate all the historical documents in one place?
Yes, we're going to consolidate them at the library, the public library.
At our library here in town?
Yes. And we are -- the director of the library is supporting us, and we think that this will be a very important project for River Edge. I think that we have ignored our history too much, and it's very important that we become more aware of it because I think that we are really sitting on a great economic engine that we're not taking advantage of, and this is one of the first steps that we're taking.
How much is the -- how much are you looking for for the grant?
We're applying for $19,600. And this is not for equipment, it's for materials. They won't allow us to apply for equipment. That will come later. And -- but I think that we will be getting a very good start. Right now, all of these materials are being kept in places that are not fire safe or flood safe, so it's very important that we do this before something happens to these documents.
And the County Historical Society, are they moving forward with a plan to consolidate all of their historical documents at the college, Bergen Community College?
Well, we're -- this is with the Bergen County Historical Society. We would like the library of the Bergen County Historical Society that has books and documents that go back to the 17th century to be housed in one location, and we believe that the proper location is Bergen Community College. And we are -- we're having steps, we're going to have a meeting on Monday, and I think that is going to happen. I really wanted the library to be housed at the campus, but they're talking about Hackensack.
Hackensack.
At the Hackensack site.
Okay.
All right, thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have good news for you in April.
And please get home safely.
Thank you.
All right, would any other member of the public wish to speak on any issue affecting their interest? Can I have a motion to close the hearing to the public?
So move.
To go back into the work session?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's go back into the work session, please, so that we can finish Borough Administrator topics. Special Improvement District meeting date. Mayor, we received a request from our Special Improvement District consultants to hold a meeting date for many of the businesses or commercial property owners that would be involved in a special improvement district. I believe they had a conversation with Council President Papaleo, who suggested these for your consideration. January 21st, which is a mayor and council meeting night, January 23rd is a Thursday, January 28th, we have a work session, or it's -- there's some question marks here. January 30th is a Thursday. February 4th is the day after a mayor and council meeting. So I think we're looking for your guidance as to what the dates are preferable for the mayor and council, and then we'll try and make it work with the consultants in the business districts. All right. If I had my -- I think we should -- I don't think we should put it on a regular meeting night where we have a work session and an eight o'clock meeting. I think we should put it on a meeting night where we just have a work session.
That would be the 28th.
Mayor, I spoke to Mark Gordon, or actually, Mark Gordon left me a message that the 21st was not good, that they were recommending the 4th. Alan, did they suggest that they could do all those dates? Because I thought that they had looked back, and they had said the 21st and the 4th were really the best dates for them. Did they communicate that to you at all?
No.
They did communicate that to me.
They may have spoken to Denise, I don't know.
Yeah. So I think what they're looking for is if we could perhaps do it on February 4th.
That's a Tuesday.
Yes, it is.
There's no other time that they could come in for a work session that would be more convenient for that?
Well, it wouldn't be works -- well, it wouldn't be that.
You could just have a work session.
This is the meeting that they -- we'd be inviting the land and the commercial owners. So it's not a work session. It would be in -- it would be --
Couldn't it be part of our work session if they came here?
Does that afford enough time?
I don't think it affords enough time. I don't think that's a practical choice on our part.
Well, if we had a very light load on a work session, we could devote it all to that discussion.
I think that in my conversations, it really needs to be a separate date from -- and my apologies about the 21st. I had forgotten that because Monday was a federal -- federal holiday, we'd moved to a Tuesday. So, the 21st was thrown out to them generally, we, I looked at Tuesdays and Thursdays, I didn't think the council would want to meet on Mondays or Fridays, and just throw out some dates to them, not to obligate the council in any other way, but if we don't make a decision soon, then invitations cannot be sent out, and, and then every meeting that we delay, setting a date pushes it off further. And this is the last piece of Don Smart's current contract and Mark Gordon's current contract. So that's why I was speaking with them, and that's also why I knew that Mark Gordon had gotten back and that it was going to be on the agenda, so I didn't ask for it to be on the agenda. But is there any objection to February 4th?
No, but I would recommend that we have an alternate snow date.
Well, that's a good idea.
Because you don't want to have something and have three people show up again.
Okay. So is anyone looking at, have the suggestion for an alternate date?
Where's it gonna be held, at NBC again? Is that where the invitations are going to suggest?
That wasn't determined yet, but I would assume that if that was available, yes.
I would just recommend we do it the following Tuesday as the snow date, keep the date, the day of the week the same time, then, because if we have that, you're getting the President's week.
I think that's a great idea. So it'd be the 4th with the snow date of the...
11th.
11th. If there's no objection, I'd like to make a motion that we set those dates aside, if a motion is required. Alan, is the motion required?
Yeah, I think it would be a good idea to make sure everybody's on board, and is there any objection to having it here, opposed to?
No.
Because this way we know this is, will be available.
I would probably think it would be great to have it here, you know, I don't see...
Yeah, I don't see any objection to where we have it, just, I think it's important that we set the date, and that's the only motion I'm making.
That's fine.
The details can be worked out by the VA and clerk's office, and the invitations can be sent out if we have the date set. So my motion is with a primary date of February 4th and a secondary date of the 11th as the snow data suggested...
Second.
...by Councilman Mignone.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstained? Thank you.
So Alan, will you be able to, to coordinate that?
Yeah, we'll take it from here.
Excellent, thank you.
Advertising for the 2014 budget meeting.
Mayor, the only date that we've set so far is January 11th, but the clerk does need to advertise dates, and we were just gonna go ahead and advertise our usual Saturday dates, and also utilize maybe an hour before some of our public meetings or work sessions. And if you want to cancel those dates, that's fine, or set something different, but right now, just to get some dates advertised and potentially set up a few things. So, that's just for the council's information.
All right, I think we should do what we did last year, we didn't have that many Saturday meetings last year, and we did do some, some larger work an hour before our regular meeting.
Yeah.
Worked out okay. All right, next is the Fire Department beverage policy. Did anybody, did everybody take a look at the proposed policy? Anybody have any questions on it?
Yeah.
I'd like to, if everybody is in agreement that it's a responsible policy, then we can have it on our reorganization agenda for January. So, someone could make them...
Mayor, I make a motion to put the River Edge Fire Department alcohol sale whole policy on our reorganization meeting agenda.
Second.
Before we take a vote, just want to make sure that if there's anyone, anyone, let's open up to the public just for, just for the purpose of discussing this policy, that we make sure that the reorganization meeting runs smoothly, and that we don't, we don't start discussing substantive issues with members of the public or members of the Fire Department.
Mayor, I move to open to the public.
Second.
All right, is any members of the public, including members of the Fire Department, wish to discuss or give us their comment on the policy that was proposed? No? Good.
If you don't have, if you don't have any question, quick.
All right, good.
Just the Fire Department on Friday night unanimously accept this decision.
That's good to know. All right.
Yep.
All right, can I close the hearing to the public?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, we have a second on it to approve this policy effective at the January reorganization meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstained? Thank you. Okay, we have a work session consent agenda, there's two items on it, one is an amendment to our engineer's contract, and one is for a release of a performance bond. I have a motion to approve those two items.
So moved.
We already did, did we not?
On the, on the work session?
Yeah, in the regular meeting, so we already approved on the consent agenda.
Oh, proven.
We pre-approved it.
All right, next is unfinished business. Any unfinished business?
Grove Street. I, we spoke to the property owner's attorney, I sent you guys an email, basically, they have some minor changes to the easement, they'd like for a language that we're going to maintain the easement, and that we have a hold harmless, some type of hold harmless indemnification agreement regarding the easement. I really don't have a problem with either of those. I told him I would revise the easement accordingly. Attorney also advised me that the property owner, prior to signing the easement, would like to have the situation with the stairs addressed and corrected. The property owner is under the assumption that the borough partially owns the stairs, that the way the property is, it's like a jagged, it's not a straight property line, and that the borough property owns the stairs. He's indicated that he would like either, one, the stairs, the borough to repair the steps, two, the borough to remove the steps, three, that the borough block off the steps in its entirety, and that the borough provide him with a hold harmless agreement. I don't think the borough, if we don't own the stairs, I don't think the borough can provide him with a hold harmless agreement on property that we simply don't own. I don't think the JCP would agree to that, I certainly would not agree to that. You don't know if a claim is made on that property, whether it's insulting from the stairs or if you remove the stairs. I asked for a copy of the survey, I have been provided with the survey, and I can give it to the borough administrator, give it to the engineer, or if anyone wants to take a look at it, to see if the stairs is actually borough-owned property, and I think that's the first step, is do we, does the borough own a part of the stairs? And obviously, if we, if the borough does, then I think everyone's in agreement those stairs are in disrepair and something should be done. The borough doesn't own them, then you certainly can block off entrance to them, but I don't see you providing an indemnification. I just kind of need some guidance to go back to the attorney with regard to the stair situation.
Kathleen.
Just recall that we own half the stairs from previous conversations.
Well, because we're dealing with a legal matter, we have to be precise in our language.
Okay.
I think the language should be that...
Allegedly.
That the stairs, which are attached to the private property owner's property, were not constructed by the borough. But the survey appears to show that, that the majority of the stairs, I think, are two feet wide. A majority of the stairs encroach upon borough property. And the stairs, of course, are a liability because they're in disrepair, and the property owner is cooperating with us and in giving us an easement for the parking down below, but doesn't want the attractive nuisance of somebody parking their car and they're trying to climb these decrepit stairs and falling. If they fall, they're likely to fall on our, on borough property, and therefore it would be a liability. So, the, you know, subject to Mr. Costa's opinion, I think that, that in accordance with the, with the easement, the stairs should be removed, and the, you know, there should be a boulder or something, put it at the base of the slope to prevent people from, you know, trying to do, do any rock climbing.
Matt, just a question to the council. Just a question to council, if the borough does not own the entirety of the stairs, could we improve that property or remove the stairs legally? Because I don't believe we can give a benefit to private property, yeah, that Rutgers case doesn't allow us to do that. So I think what ultimately would happen would be regardless of ownership is the best, that is to probably just blockade the entrance to the stairs.
We, we can't provide though a hold harmless or an indication, obviously, I think we're all in agreement with that. If you block them and somebody decides to go around it and then falls on the stairs, do you create an attractive nuisance by blocking it off? Yeah, the stairs probably should be removed by the homeowner, but you can't force that either if they're in that bad of a situation. But I agree with the councilman, we, you cannot improve private property for the benefit of one private owner.
But what do you mean by improving, improving the property? By removing the stairs?
By removing the stairs, we would be improving the property because of its current condition.
But it's, it's really not improving the property, if Mr. Grasso has no objection and agrees that his survey is accurate, that the stairs encroach upon borough property, all we're doing is, is removing the encroachment. We're not improving his property, we're only removing the encroachment. Right?
Well, if, if we're removing what's on our property...
Yeah.
Then that's fine, but we have to determine first who actually...
Who owns it.
Who owns it.
His indication is that we own it, but you're indicating that.
It's an encroachment on our property.
Which then we have every right to...
Yes, we have, yes.
We don't own the stairs, we only own the footing, that, if you look at the stairs, which are 24 inches wide, 16 to 18 inches of the stairs is on borough property, about six inches is on Mr. Grasso's property. That's the way the stairs were constructed. They're, they're, they encroach phenomenally on borough, on borough property, and the stairs are in disrepair, and we should remove the encroachment, which means to remove the stairs. That's how I look at it.
I just want to ask Mr. Solow, so if this gets done, you know, is it the last issue to wrap it up, to get this going?
He's indicated no other issues, he's indicated that he's fine with the revision of the easement with regard to the maintenance and the indemnification, which I don't have a problem with, and then obviously the stair issue has to be resolved.
And then that's it?
That's it, according to the attorney. But he wants the stair issue resolved before the easement's on. One way or the other.
Do our stairs you remove?
If, if that'll do it with the property owner, that the removal, again, I, we can't give him an indemnification, so the removal of the stairs, we certainly can do that because, yeah, if it's an encroachment...
Yeah.
We can do that if that'll...
And then, you know, going forward, after we do, after we get the initial phase of the parking done, if we can get funding or if we have the need for additional parking there, and we want to redo the retaining wall at some, at some future point in time, we'll be entering into new negotiations with the property owner to, dealing with that eas, dealing with that easement issue so that we can put up a proper set of stairs.
Do you want anything verified by the borough engineer before I send out the letter saying to the owner?
Yeah, we, you should send a copy of that to the, to Mr. Costa.
Got to. Because I couldn't make a copy of that.
Well, we, we need a right of entry form, if we're going to ultimately remove the stairs, we'll need to enter upon his property to do that. I'd like, I'd like Mr. Costa to sign off on, on his recommendation that the stairs should be removed. Or whether he recommends that the stairs should be removed.
All right, anything else other unfinished business? Any new business?
Link request. Maybe it's a little self-serving, but Alan, do we have a heavy agenda for next Monday night? Is there a need to have a work session?
Certainly not self-serving. I don't recollect what's on, what we have planned, because it probably can't be too much if I can't recollect.
Because I would just, you know, being Christmas week and if there's not a heavy agenda, everything can wait, maybe we can have the work session.
You don't want to come here?
Got three more years ahead of me.
So can we make a, is there a recommendation we can make? Should we make a motion?
We can make a motion, then I have to have the work session.
Is it legal if it's not advertised or anything?
Well, they could cancel it.
Huh? All right, so I make a motion to cancel the meeting. Well, let's, let's find out what's...
Yeah, I said, let, let Alan find it, and if there's really nothing that can't wait, then let's, let's cancel the meeting, that's all, I'm just bringing it up as an option.
I don't know whether we have a date for the planner to come back, you know, whether that was being discussed or not, so.
Well, pursuant to the bylaws you just adopted, you only have meetings on the first and third Monday each week.
We eliminated the fourth.
So there is no work session. So, it's already gone, technically. You got to read these.
We have a special meeting.
Yes, unless there's a special meeting.
These, all right, we can, if, if we, why don't we just, just all agree that if it's not a heavy agenda, that we should adjourn the meeting on 23rd? We'll find out from Denise tomorrow exactly what, exactly if there's any fires that have to be, they won't be able to wait until January.
Don't show up on the 23rd if there's no meeting.
Any other new business? I have a matter of new business, and I'm a little, you know, I don't really know how to handle it because now that I don't have any liaison appointing authority, I wanted to create a new liaison spot for January. Right now, we have a liaison to all business school departments, including the planning board, we don't really have a liaison to the zoning board, and we really don't have a liaison for, for, liaison for redevelopment. I know at one point when Councilman Cannon was on council, he used to attend meetings that were redevelopment oriented with New Jersey Transit and things like that. So I think it would be a good idea to create that liaison position for next year.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to form those two liaisons, zoning board and redevelopment. As two separate...
Two separate liaisons?
That one person could be...
Oh, okay.
More, the same person could be appointed to those, but they would be too separate. We, we had talked about that, you and I, and I thought that that's what we were thinking, and I was in agreement with.
Okay. All right, so we have, there's a motion?
Second.
There's a second? The, the motion and a second is to create a liaison for the zoning board and for, and for redevelopment. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstained? Okay. And you guys can discuss amongst yourselves where the, who's going to be liaison to what, between now and the reorganization.
I'd like to make a motion that Councilman Mignone be the liaison to the zoning and the redevelopment.
I would second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstained? All right, any other new business? No? Okay. Do I have to open the meeting to the public again for the work session?
Yeah.
Okay. I have a motion to open, open to the public for the purposes of discussing the work session?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You remember the public wish to be heard regarding the, regarding the work session or any issue affecting your interest? Motion to close the hearing to the public?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, can I have a motion to adjourn the work session?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.